In attendance, thank you for joining us. My name is councillor Brian Holmshire and I'm chair of this Central Local Area Committee, the LAC it's known as. I'd like to say thank you to Sheffield Wednesday for hosting our public event this evening. So, thank you very much Sheffield Wednesday. Anyone here from Wednesday? Thank you. Yeah, please pass my regards on. You will have been handed, or will be handed, question slips. Please can I request that these are handed into a member of staff after the breakout discussions for questions that will be answered later in the session. Have they gone out yet, Adeel? So, the questions have gone out, yeah. If you can fill those in and hand them back to a member of staff. Now, before I ask other councillors to introduce themselves, I'm going to hand over to Jay in Democratic Services, just along here, who's going to read out the housekeeping arrangements.
Thank you Chair. Please can I request that mobile telephones and other such equipment are switched to silent mode so not disturb the conduct of the meeting. There is no fire test planned for today. If there is an emergency evacuation, please take instruction from the council staff present. The toilets are down at the bottom of the hallway there. The meeting today is open to the public and will be streamed live onto subsequent broadcasts via the council's website. You should be aware that the council is a data controller under the Data Protection Act. Data collected during this webcast will be retained in accordance with the council's published policy. By entering the meeting room, you are consented into being filmed and to the possible use of those images and sound recordings for webcasting. Thank you Jay.
Thank you, thank you Jay. So, we normally get between 16 and 80 people. But, I'm sure you're going to make up from quality what we've not got in quantity. So, thank you for coming along. And we always ask for positive engagement. So, we have two presentations today and three feedback tables, which will give, well, we normally give up to 40 minutes per feedback table, for people to pull together ideas, to talk to the facilitators there. The facilitators will help keep the conversation going and then at the end of that, that then comes back to us and you can say, one of you is nominated, to say what's been happening on that table. We have one on sport and leisure. We have one hosted by Sheffield Wednesday, which is going to focus on football as a whole. And we have a third table, which is on tennis. So, item two, apologies for absence.
Chair, I've received an apology from councillor Ruth Nezro.
Thank you. Item three, exclusion of the press and public. There are no items that require the exclusion of the press and public. And, item four, declarations of interest. Are there any members here wish to declare an interest in any of the items of business on the agenda? So, what I'd like to do now is ask the councillors to introduce themselves. We'll start at the far end of the table. Henry, if you can do that?
I'm councillor Henry Notte for Hillsborough Ward.
Good evening everybody. I'm Christine Gilligan-Curbo. I'm a councillor here in Hillsborough Ward.
And Toby Mullinson, also here at Hillsborough Ward.
Councillor Angela Argenzio, councillor for Broomhill and Sharovale.
Councillor Martin Foots for City Ward, where Sheffield United is based, don't hate me.
Yes, Douglas Johnson, also City Ward, which is miles away from here.
Just want to introduce myself, Pern and say which ward I represent, which is Broomhill and Sharovale.
Hi everyone, Adeel Zalman, Community Services Manager.
Chair of Democratic Service Office.
Hello, my name's Tollan. I'm councillor for Walkley Ward.
Hi, my name's Laura McLean and I'm councillor for Walkley Ward as well.
Thank you very much, thank you everyone. So, on the agenda, we now move on to item five, which is the Central Local, oh, yes? Yes councillor Argenzio, yes.
There's too many microphones on. Sorry, I just wanted to say that I would like it to be minuteed in something that I've raised at S and R yesterday.
Strategy and Resources Committee.
Yeah. That we are feeling by having this meeting at this time during the month of Ramadan. This means that our staff who are here, who have to break fast, have had to do it here rather than at home with their family, but also means that we've got a lot, a smaller attendance and it's not, it's not like, you know, a criticism of the staff who are here because it's Democratic Services that timetable at the beginning of the year. And I've raised it yesterday at S and R that when we do the timetable of the meetings, we have to have Ramadan in because it's not good enough for our staff, for our members and for the public not to have access to a meeting because, you know, they're doing something else. So, thank you very much. Could we have that minuteed please?
Thank you very much, thank you very much Angela Lee. Yes, it's been noted throughout the council that we normally have this on a regular basis between six and eight PM, which is completely the wrong time actually for folks who are breaking the fast. So, we need to think about that. So, if any of our public meetings come up during fast time during Ramadan, then we need to rethink the timing. Can you, if you can add that to the minutes as well please, Jay? Okay. So, I'm going to hand over now to Adeel Zalman to give a short update on the Central LAC
Thank you Chair. This is just a short verbal update on the total spend for the Central Local Area Committee. And just for the purpose of the audience who may have not been to a previous LAC meeting, LAC stands for Local Area Committee and there's seven across the city. I manage Central, which covers the wards of Hillsborough, Walkley, Broomhill and Sharovale and the City Ward. Each local area committee was given £100,000 pounds to spend in line with its community plan. We had five actions and priorities as part of that plan, which are outlined further in this paper. And they are transport and highways, environment, communities and neighbourhoods, business and skills and community safety and crime. In terms of this paper today, there's no decisions for the councillors on, to my left and right, is just to note the spend against the £100,000 budget and also the expenditure against the Central LAC cost of living fund. In terms of the spend this year, so page four of the report, it outlines the total spend for this year, which is currently, at the time of writing this report, is £103,784. The remaining budget has, within the last week, been allocated and we will be providing a detailed breakdown in the next meeting in 24, 25. And the breakdown per each theme is also highlighted in the paper. Communities and neighbourhoods priority seems to be the highest in terms of the funding allocated by ward councillors. And just to mention, there's been a variety of projects that we funded. Sheffield Wednesday Community Programme, we've got Ben here, who we funded activities in Hillsborough, Essex Food Bank in the City Ward, there's been various initiatives down in Kelham Island and in Broomhill and Sharovale. We've also funded some community cohesion events down at Broomhill Library. And in regards to the cost of living fund, Central LAC was given a budget of £63,704. In the last meeting, ward councillors, the committee decided to allocate 50% of that towards the Citizens Advice Bureau. The remaining allowance of just over £31,000 has been allocated and on page five of the report, there is a breakdown of which community organisations the funding has been allocated to. And in terms of the recommendations to the committee, it's to note the expenditure against £100,000 and to note the expenditure against the Central LAC cost of living fund as detailed in the report. Thank you Chair.
Thank you very much, Adeel. Now, we can move on quite swiftly into item six, which is... Should we get to move on? Apologise. So, any questions from members? And I can see your hand up already.
Yeah, okay. Just a quick verbal update, thanks Chair. So, on big page 13, it lists some of the cost of living projects that have been funded. As Adeel said, this has all been, the remaining £4,000 or so has now been allocated, but I just wanted to give a verbal update that £4,000 of that is going towards St Mary's for cost of living support, to support the projects they're doing there. And then also, I just wanted...
St Mary's and Highfield.
St Mary's and Highfield, yeah. And then I also just wanted to provide, just remind you that councillor Bernard Leto sent his apologies too, because I think that was missed at the beginning. Thank you.
I think that was asking for a verbal update or affirmation that that was going ahead, Okay, so are councillors content with that? Show any discontent if you wish. Yeah, councillor Argenzio.
Can I just say thank you to the staff that have made all of these things happen? Because there is a lot of admin behind all of this work and we couldn't do it without the staff. So, thank you for nagging us and reminding us and reminding us again to look at the papers and to look at the applications.
Thank you. You're doing the chair's job very well, thank you. It's fine if I forget and I apologise. Yes, so thank you to all the LAC staff. Back to the agenda. So, I've got item six and item seven, which are our presentations. So, item six is going to be a sports and leisure presentation. So, what we normally do for these is, is we don't launch into questions afterwards. We feed them through the tables, so that then gives an opportunity for folks to be able to discuss what they've been presented on as well. So, and there are presentations that feed into the tables that are going to happen afterwards. So, the first presentation, Catherine Mudge and Stuart Turner, if you could give your presentation, that would be great. Yes, if councillors want to seat themselves in the audience, it's much easier then to be able to see the presentation.
I'm sorry, I'm just watching, was you behind my phone?
I'll move on.
Can everyone see that? Am I in people's way now? Fantastic. Okay, so we, just to introduce myself first, my name's Catherine Mudge. I'm one of two service managers within the Sport Leisure and Events team at Sheffield City Council. To give you an idea, we're a team, a small team of the six members of the Sport Leisure and Events team. And I'm talking about a strategy that was developed previous to me joining the organisation. So, a lot of this hard work has been done by my colleague Kate, who couldn't be with us today, and the team previous, that had spent a lot of time consulting and working and listening to local people to help understand what we need from a sport and leisure strategy. If you can just flick on for us please. What is a sport and leisure strategy? It's, as you might guess, it's everything involving sports, physical activity and leisure. So, it's things from the grass pitches that you see out in communities, to the leisure centres, to green and open spaces. And our main ethos is around helping people live healthier and happier and more active lives. That's the main driver for the strategy, encouraging people to try and be more active out in their community. Click on again for us please. There are, just to note, there's kind of, there's two strategies really that are in the ethos, that drive around movement and moving more. So, one is called the Move More Strategy. Now, that is a collaboration that happens in Sheffield across the city and it's a combination of different partners, so people at the universities, Sheffield Wednesday, who were in the facility today, and all partners across Sheffield have a joint purpose around helping people move more. And Sheffield City Council have produced a strategy which almost answers to the Move More Strategy that exists within the city. So, as I say, the team worked really hard to try and listen as best we could to residents of Sheffield. Almost a year's worth of consultation took place, trying to understand what was great about Sheffield and the city we live in and what assets that we had existing and how can we make best use of that. But also, possibly more importantly, what else can we do? What's missing? What would we like to see? What's most important to our residents around physical activity and what could we be doing better? How could we work with our partners better? We held specific focus groups targeting some of our target audiences. So, we held conversations with people with disabilities, with long-term health conditions, those from ethnically diverse communities, to really try and understand how we can best reach everybody, particularly those that might be less active or feel that there are barriers in place, meaning that they weren't being active as they might like to be able to. We also work with a number of kind of professional bodies, so clubs, national governing bodies of sport, our leisure centres, our professional clubs, to also make sure that we're serving those within the city and hopefully attracting more organisations to come into Sheffield. So, we have a number of national governing bodies in the city who bring major events. They bring their elite athletes, they make the city of Sheffield better and known as the city of sport. Awful background though is. So, we conducted the strategy with some principles that are on the boards behind us. I suppose most importantly, I'll pick out a couple to talk about, involving the community as best we can. That was probably number one and our top priority, trying to make sure that we're listening, we're constantly reviewing what we're doing, making sure that it meets the needs of the community. You may have seen within the news, and it will come up in a little bit, we've been able to secure almost £120 million worth of investment into our leisure buildings. It's really important that we do that investment, trying to work towards carbon net zero and making sure that we're being environmentally friendly and sustainable. That's a major part of our strategy. Being collaborative and ultimately tackling inequalities. Unfortunately, we know that areas of our residents are less likely to be active, particularly those from poorer communities and particularly those from ethnically diverse communities. And we can't shy away from that, we need to think of ways in which that we become more of a welcoming opportunity for people and see and help people improve and tackle the health inequality that exists within the city. So, there are six key themes, one, investing in an active Sheffield. So, as I mentioned, we've worked really, really hard and colleagues have worked really hard to secure some investment in the city. And you will see, over the next 10 years, we will be spending very diligently our £117 million, to be precise, investment in our leisure buildings. That includes three significant facility builds, one at Springs Leisure Centre, based up in Park Ward. The next will be Concord, based over Firth Parkway. And then last on the list is Hillsborough, obviously across the road from us. Those three centres will receive some significant infrastructure and building works. Alongside that, we'll be doing some what's called life cycle maintenance, so maintenance of our centres in order for them to be modern, welcoming and to be more fit for purpose. It's recognised that we've got a real ageing stock of facilities at the moment. Most, those of you that have been in the city will know, a lot of our leisure buildings are as a result of the student games back in the 90s and some of them haven't changed a lot since then. So, we recognise we need to do some work on that. So, here are some of those. So, we've got Hillsborough Leisure Centre. Just to mention as well, I don't know Stuart will come on to it later, we have most recently installed a Changing Places facility at Hillsborough Park. And the Zest Centre also, I must say, part of that life circle maintenance, Zest is also one of the facilities that's receiving some investment into the facility. So, you'll see that over the next few years. The next is around inspiring sporting achievement. So, we're still working to try and attract major events to the city and also some of those governing bodies in elite sport. So, hopefully some of you will have visited some of the Women's Euros events and the Rugby League World Cup, that we've had some fantastic events in Sheffield. We have got upcoming the world figure skating, sorry, the European figure skating and we're about to bid for the world figure skating in 2029. So, these are major events that come to the city and we'll be looking to try and do that, not only to bring investment and to inspire our young people and of different ages, but also it acts as a way of bringing additional long-term investment from our governing bodies as well. A lot of our work is done with, and in partnership with our voluntary and community sector and important that we help to build capacity within that sector. It's, for those of you that have children or yourself are involved in sport, it's very much run by volunteers a lot of the time and it's absolutely vital that we not only recognise those but support and develop volunteers within our sector and help either in build their skills but also try and break investment into the voluntary sector as well. Plus recognise and celebrate the success of our voluntary groups that are able to provide sport and physical activity. Major priority for us is around children and young people, particularly in the strategy we have a commitment around improving attainment within swimming. So, we have a real commitment that we ensure that our young people are able to swim safely, particularly as a life skill but also crucial, if you may have seen some recent incidences in the news around children, around open water. It's crucial that we provide sufficient training but also the space in our pools so that our young people can learn to swim. And then, active environments, again, we'll come, Stuart will talk from a couple of examples of the work that we're doing in our open green spaces. But you know, we know Sheffield is one of the greenest cities in Europe. We need to celebrate that but also recognise that we need to make our open spaces welcoming and safe. A lot of the feedback that we had from our consultation was around the feeling of safety is vital in our open green spaces and we're working to try and achieve that, either through improved lighting but also making them more welcoming. I will pass to Stuart at this stage, if that's okay.
Cool. So, my name's Stuart Turner, I work for the Parks and Devicide Service in Sheffield City Council. Move More has been mentioned a few times and the active environments aspect of that, I've been involved with the group, coordinating that group for many years now, kind of focused on improving how our environments work for all of our communities across the city. I think examples of that in the Central Ward in recent years, things like Wisewood, new playground, the wheels track at Hillsborough Park, the shared use started being developed in that area as well. But also around many of the green spaces across the Central Ward, the Central LAC area, there's been a lot of investment in recent years. And that journey is kind of continuing as we move forward. And Catherine's already mentioned that the changing places toilet, and I've just cycled through Hillsborough Park and what we're here tonight. And it's really good to see the tarmac and work happening around the new facilities, the link into the library and to the courtyard area of the new cafe there, linking into the changing places toilet. The next area that we'd really like to develop, that we're in the feasibility stage at Hillsborough Park, is the, is making the playground a lot more vibrant and inclusive. And so, we've got a feasibility study going on there. And the focus here tonight is also, it's great that there's a stand-up on the activity hub in Hillsborough Park, but obviously this is going to be a really great investment in Hillsborough Park moving forward in terms of sport and recreation facilities. So, obviously I'd love the opportunity to find out more about that. Got a colleague here, I'm sorry, he's got me here. Thank you. And we'll also, but that's not the only thing that's going on in the Central Ward. We've also got at upper Handover Street there, the Voltares Games area there, the section 106 development funding, that we're investing in that facility. I can imagine where space at the ground and that's probably going to be in the autumn period, but again, there's improvements happening there as well. And then just outside of the LAC area, we're really excited because we've been working on the Parkwood Springs, Heaven Country Park for a number of years, especially one of my colleagues, John Dallop, who's been kind of instrumental in that, but obviously working with a huge number of partners to make this come to reality. The kiosks and toilets, which are such an important part of accessibility and desperation for people to be able to access and spend quality time in these green spaces and get involved in the mountain biking and the exciting opportunities in such big spaces like Parkwood Springs. Then that kiosk and toilet facility will be on-site hopefully by April. So, then there'll be a good launch of that in the summer, so that'd be a really great opportunity to get more involved in Parkwood Springs. But obviously, the really exciting news of Parkwood Springs is this £19 million levelling up fund, which is going to be a really big game changer for that site and really kind of putting Parkwood Springs on the map as its destination, Heaven Country Park, which I think will, you know, be a really vibrant site, drawing in people from across the city and as a regional facility as well. So, that's kind of where I work with it, sorry not to take too much time, but kind of active environments.
And then, but last of our things is around connecting health and wellbeing. So, this area is blessed to have the Zest Centre, that is enabled a whole one-stop-shop for physical activity and health, but also a number of other services that they're ready to provide. We're leading as well a development of something called SPAS, which is the Sheffield Physical Activity Referral Scheme. So, that is for people that are referred by their GP to move more basically, to connect with operators and facilities, to get involved with a choice of different activities to improve their health. That programme is under review at the moment and will be launched, relaunched in September of this year, including additional opportunities across the city for people to be referred to. There'll be some increased quality standards and there'll be, the councillor coordinating that, where previously it was coordinated by the leisure provider in the city. So, it's a really exciting opportunity. So it's a really exciting opportunity and hopefully a better scheme that will enable people to be referred more easily by health colleagues but also supported over a 12-month period as opposed to a three-month period. I'm expecting you not to be able to read that if you've got eyesight like mine, but we will share some of the slides afterwards. This just gives a summary, oh thank you, this just gives a summary of some of the commitments under each of the six themes, I've touched on a couple of them as I've been explaining through, but in short, as I say, in terms of the investing in that to Sheffield, we want to and we will be involving and wanting to seek views from the community around the leisure investments, so Hillsborough for example in this area. When we come to the point of looking at managing that investment on that site, we will be holding community engagement sessions, trying to find out what people want from that facility and trying to put those into fruition. Just move over a little bit for me. Again, as I mentioned, a couple of aspects on there, working more closely with schools to help, there's a programme called Opening Schools Facilities, that we'll be working with and trying to encourage schools to open up their facilities outside of curriculum time to increase the amount of usage of our fantastic sports facilities on school sites as well as school swimming. As Stuart mentioned in terms of active environments, a number of outcomes within this area and constantly looking at how we can improve our green open spaces. I've mentioned connecting health and wellbeing around our SPAS programme, if you could just move left for me please. And then lastly, I'll just touch on active communities, again really blessed in this ward area that we've got a number of fantastic community groups like Conforall, naming just one of them and obviously Shepherd Wednesday Zest in the area, but there's numerous voluntary community partners that do fantastic provision in our area and our ambition is that we work with them to build their capacity, support them to increase funding and fundraising, to enable them to do more and offer support where we can. Thank you. I think that's our last slide in terms of information, just flip on one for me. Oh, questions? Okay, so there are some questions on there that we might look to discuss on the tables, but we can do that.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much Catherine and thank you Stuart. I'm going to move on to our next presentation, so if you have questions about that presentation, hold on to them and we will have an opportunity to work around the tables and discuss them. So next presentation, there were going to be three by the way, but we've toned it down to two, so we've got a little bit more time with each one. So our next presentation is going to be from Ben Winter, Aya Ben. Hello, you okay to introduce yourself?
Yeah.
Thank you very much, yeah, if you stick to about five minutes or so, I'll try. Okay, do try, yeah.
Good evening everyone, my name's Ben Winter, I'm the Deputy Head of Community at Sheffield Wednesday Community Programme. So effectively we are the charitable arm of the football club, we are an arm of the football club but we are a registered charity, unfortunately Chansey doesn't fund us even though some people do, do think that often, however, you know, our goal is to not only work within this area but work citywide, so using the football club and the power of the badge to support people in the community across a number of themes really, which I'm going to go into. So recently, I think there's another bit there, sorry I've got a little bit of, yeah. Recently we redressed our vision and values, so we realised that coming out of Covid, the organisation has changed as well as many other organisations, particularly for us was about developing communities together, we work with a lot of charities across Sheffield, particularly within this area. Together means a lot to us in terms of outreach into young people and adults, like organisations like Zest, we do a lot of work with Zest as well as lots of other charities, so we really wanted to have our vision and values represent what we are as a football club and as a community programme. So in terms of our values in particular, passionate belief in our principles and our practice, so you know, again personally I'm extremely passionate about this work and the people we bring in to work in this industry are also passionate. I think particularly around football, people think that we just deliver football, but we like to say that we're more than football, we deliver a lot of provisions that aren't anything to do with football. Again, reacting to people's needs within the communities. Our commitment, again, for us, it's not just around the engagement that we do across the sessions, it's more than that, it's the commitment to ensure that we can achieve outcomes for people in the community, so understanding that holistic approach to what people need and that might be physical activity, that might be engagement, but wider than that, what commitment can we provide to people to support their wider outcomes later in life, years and years on. In terms of resilience, I think that was important for us because again, as mentioned, coming out of Covid, it was extremely challenging, us and as well as many other charities really again had to battle through that period and make sure that we can continue doing the work that we're doing. And I think the resilience shown between the team, you know, it helped us grow a lot. A lot of the work that we're doing right now is because of that, because of the wider partnerships, the relationships with the council that we've had and that's led to us increasing our size. We've just opened a facility just across the road, I think many of you will have seen that, the Jubilee Sports Club, so we've worked with the Football Foundation to build that site, we've been looking at a site for many years now and the idea for us was having a base for us, but not just having a base where people come to us, we also really enforce that arm of outreach into the communities. But on the site we have a football pitch, four G A S football pitch, but also a gym where we run a lot of our health provisions. In terms of learning, again, we deliver a lot of programmes across a lot of themes and sometimes I struggle to keep track of everything that's going on, but what's important to us is learning because communities are changing constantly and the needs of communities are changing constantly, so for us, we need to be continuously learning and understanding how we can react to that. And again, championing equality and recognising the value of integration, so some of you may have seen recently some of the incidents happening on a match day, which is a, you know, a real shame. I think it's important that not just from the perspective of the community programme but on behalf of the club, we show that this is an inclusive club, this is an inclusive place to come on a match day and wider than that, we have a lot of football outside of a match day, so for us to be able to go out and educate the community and integrate people, so I think football and food is always just an incredible way to integrate people and you know, we try and do that across the communities, bringing people together, it's such an actual way to do it. So in terms of our themes, we currently cover four themes, the first theme is participation, so we do a lot of work with primary schools and secondary schools. Within this area, we are delivering a programme called Primary Stars, which is not just about delivering physical activity, it's also about training teachers to deliver physical activity but also to support children through some of the challenges they may face in life, so we also deliver things around mental health, around hate crime, around internet safety, anything you can think of really that a young person might face, we'll also try to combine physical activity and education because hopefully we're seeing as an outside organisation coming in, positive role models with the Sheffield Wednesday badge, using that to support them to learn. Football development, again, that is obviously our niche area, we do a lot of football development in young people, not only for young people that want to progress as footballers but also young people that might want to progress into grassroots football or just wider participation, so we deliver the football programme at the Jubilee and in partnership with Sheffield City Trust across the city. We also deliver something called Mini Islands, which is early start, so young people as young as three years old come to that and again, that's a football programme. We deliver holiday camps, so our holiday camps are based at Jubilee, which is great to host it there, but we also go and outreach and we deliver half across the city. We're also a half commissioner for locality D, so we've worked with I think about 25 organisations now commissioning money to go and deliver the half programme, so widening that exposure of the programme, which has been a really incredible programme and hopefully it gets extended after April. So our youth and integration department, probably been the area that's expanded the most in recent times, so the core of that programme really started off with a programme called Premier League Kicks. So Premier League Kicks is about delivering not just sport and physical activity but youth work, any kinds of open access provisions where young people can come for free. We work with the police and the youth service to find areas where there is high ASP, high levels of deprivation and we'll deliver that activity for young people in the evening. So from there, we look to offer volunteering opportunities, qualifications, inspiring activities like tournaments, we'll take young people that have kind of been with us for a while over to tournaments in other areas like Liverpool and Manchester, representing Sheffield Wednesday, so they'll wear the Sheffield Wednesday badge and be able to represent their city. We also deliver, well from Premier League Kicks was a programme that formed around one-to-one mentoring, so we realised the value in providing role models for young people that were at risk of exclusion, criminal exploitation, so we get referrals from schools, from social care, from youth justice and that is a programme that is a weekly service, one-to-one, it could be an hour, it could be two hours, these young people come to us or we go to them and we provide physical activity, again, education, but it's more about that positive relationship and supporting young people to reintegrate, that might be reintegration back in school, it might just be to achieve outcomes that they maybe never had the support to achieve previous to that. So we did that and we delivered that in the community, that then led into a programme with Learn Sheffield, so we now deliver the Safe Task Force Initiative, which is a programme across Sheffield where we have 500 young people identified that are most at risk of exclusion, most at risk of criminal exploitation and we provide the schools with a mentor per day, so we're currently working across 15 schools and on a day-to-day basis, the mentors will have appointments with young people that'll be outside of education and it could be an informal chat, it could be a walk, it could be sports, it could be sitting down with them and setting their goals, but the main aim is to support them to improve in those areas, so attend more, you know, increase their chances of achieving GCSEs or generally support them with the wider needs in terms of emotional regulation, other things like that. We also deliver a disability programme, we're just about to be on the framework for short breaks, which is commissioned by the council, so we'll be providing short breaks for children with disabilities to provide some respite for parents, so that might be on weekends, holidays and youth clubs, so there was a kind of five-hour stint where young people come to us, their needs are supported, they're having fun and parents can go out and kind of go to the shops or go away for a period of time. We also deliver a disability football programme as well, so providing sport and physical activity for young people and adults with disabilities as well as working with asylum seekers and refugees, so we've worked for a few years with Mears Housing, so at any given time there's around 110, 120 asylum seekers that come into the city and are housed at the site by Mears. And in Covid, we delivered a programme with Yorkshire Sport where we actually did some activity in the car park because at the time, the people there were some of the most isolated people during Covid and we found that they were coming over with no clothes, no money, no contact with family and a lot of injuries from travel as well, from travel to the country, so we would provide some physical activity, some sport, which has now led to us continuing that activity at Ponce Forge, Sheffield City Trust support that and we deliver a football programme there as well. Women and girls is a big area of our provision, so again, female activity, we have women's walking football programme, we are trying to create pathways into grassroots, into elite women's football as well as various other kind of youth empowerment programmes that we've delivered in partnership with UK Youth. We also work in Hatfield Prison and with the probation service, so we deliver a qualification in Hatfield Prison to support people to reintegrate in the community when they're released, so we provide them with a football qualification where they can go and potentially volunteer. We had one guy who came out and set his own business up and he came to us and spoke to some of the young people that we have at our education programme and it was really impactful, so it was a great legacy of the work that we've done. So leading on to that, our education programme, so we have quite a big BTEC programme in partnership with the college, so we have around 155 students on BTEC programmes at the minute, so that's the sport BTEC, but they also come and train with us, some of the players actually train more than the first team, they're always up at the facility in the training, so they have that kind of environment that they are in an elite sports environment and supporting them to progress into employment opportunities is a key outcome of that. We also, further to that, we have a foundation degree, I think we currently have around eight young people, now adults, that are employed with Sheffield Wednesday Community Programme from the degree programme, so it's about creating those pathways for us and you know, these are some of the people that have trained in this industry for the past three years and they're ready-made to come and work with us really. We have a needs programme, so young people that are not in education, employment or training, that was in partnership with the EFL and again, it's about providing that programme by the football club, a 12-week programme, supporting them into employment or training. Again, we have an alternative provision, so we currently work with I think probably around 15 secondary schools and primary schools, young people that can't maintain mainstream education because of behavioural issues, it might be mental health and they come to us in a smaller group environment and they will be part of physical activity but they will also get some AQAs qualifications and some other qualifications with us. And again, they use the facility, there's a short walk across the road and again, we've had some really amazing outcomes of young people that haven't attended school for a year and we've managed to get them to the stage where they can go back into that environment and learn and thrive. We were part of the Kickstart Programme, I just mentioned there, now it's finished now, but we also have some young people that have progressed through Kickstart and are still working with us, which was kind of the main aim of the programme. And finally, adult education, so in partnership with the council, we delivered a number of courses here, a number of qualifications for people that are looking for maths, English, mental health courses or some of the courses that we delivered in that area. And finally, our health department, so as I mentioned, our health department is mainly based at the Jubilee, we have a community health gym, but we also outreach across the community. So we deliver a core programme in partnership with the council and also Sheffield United as well, funnily enough, you know, we come together and we do work collaboratively, even though there's a rivalry there from the clubs, but we direct a lot of our provision in Pass and Cross, so the idea of that programme was to work solely in a number of areas and really build on provisions rather than kind of a scattergun approach across the city because there's so many areas that we could work in. We in particular identify Pass and Cross to be an area that could do with more of this type of activity, so we probably deliver around 10 sessions per week in the area. This is football, talk club, we work with SOAR on wellbeing Wednesday and we have, it's amazing, we have around 60 people coming in, in groups of 15 for seated exercise and arts and crafts and various other things that are going on. So our active through football is probably the core of that area and similarly Sheffield United are working in Burngrieve for their area, so they're two areas that we're really trying to focus on. Over the space of five years, it was a real commitment from Football Foundation and Sport England to not only just have a programme that parachutes in and then disappears, this is a programme that has longevity and we can really build on the outcomes across those years. Our active through cancer programme with Western Park has just started, so again, based at Jubilee, we're supporting people who might be pre, during or post-cancer, again, some of the outcomes there, we've had a gentleman that came to us pre some operations and we did some exercise and we generally kind of supported him through light exercise, which led to the doctor saying that he was then ready to have ration, be healthier, a nutrition as well in there, the key outcome, plus from the gym as well as draws through social media things. Our active life programme, we've just started, we are a community for Hills, Echoes, which means we are dating and dad. We are a community for Hills, Echo Spur, which means we are dating and dad as of periods, but a group down the facility. And they employ young people, they're referring to the clubs as a key. Trying to, these clubs as a, and services that they can access across those three. Of course, so we're further. Walking football is initiatives that we run, so tact in isolation is the main aim of that, getting people active. So walking football is structured around the Jubilee site as well, but also in the community. We have walking groups that run. We have an ex-footballer, John Pearson. So a lot of people that come to those walks will know John from back in the day, playing at Wednesday and playing at Leeds. So he hosts those walking groups and the walking football. And it's amazing to see people coming together and engaging with John. And we have a women's walking football group, as I mentioned, and finally a 50-plus programme. So that again, came from our Fit House programme, delivered here. The Fit House programme has stopped now unfortunately, but we've continued it. It's all about activity within your football ground. So they actually participate pitch-side, which is quite a rare opportunity for people. So you'll see people kind of running down the pitch-side and up and down the stairs. And again, that is around engaging people 50-plus and we also deliver that at our Hillsborough Gym as well, so our Jubilee Gym as well. So that's the breadth of the work that we're doing. As I say, it's quite confusing to keep track of everything, but the team have really grown. We're a team of around 80 people within it and they're all passionate and ready to work in partnership, so.
That's absolutely quite astonishing, the breadth of what you are able to do. I used to work with help out at Sheffield United.
Do you want that?
Yes, spooky, isn't it? Sheffield United Community Forum, sorry, yes, it's the community forum side of it. And they had a great programme, but actually what you've done is take that up and you've spread it much, much wider. So I'm really absolutely pleased to hear, we had to say, thank you. If anyone's got any questions, please save them again for the tables when we break up into the tables, which we're about to do now. We've got 35 minutes where we can sit around and discuss your thoughts to do with sports and leisure. And that will be facilitated by a different person who will introduce themselves once you sit round on the tables. You are welcome to move tables as well if you wish to get in the breadth of what we're offering. We're going to be looking at Sheffield Wednesday's community programme, but also if we want to talk about football more generally and its impact in the city. And I think the focus is going to be on disability programmes, I think, Ben? That's what I've got down on my list. So if you wouldn't mind focusing on that, that would be great. We've also got tennis opportunities in Sheffield, so Isabel will be hosting a table on that. And then we're looking at, I've got the name Levi Ashton down, you're Levi, hello Levi, hi. And Catherine Mudge, who presented earlier, will be leading on sports, leisure and active travel. We wanted to also include the active travel opportunities and the outdoor facilities that we have in Sheffield. So that's three different tables. So people make your way to those tables. We're not having a scheduled tea and coffee break, so please help yourself to tea and coffee, which is free over there. And I believe there are a few biscuits as well. 35 minutes. They're in the written notes and what you will do, a deal, is make sure that they go to the right folks. So if we've got stakeholders involved, so for example, we had something on parks and open spaces earlier this year and we had the Sheffield Wildlife Trust came along. And so even though they're not part of the council, we made sure that they also got that feedback from the session. So who would like to make start? Anyone who's going to put their hand up and give us some feedback from your table? One minute will do if you can convince it into that. Yes, we also need to have a microphone that moves around. If we could do that, that would be great. Or in Henry's case, are you going to go and find a microphone? You can start first, if you wish, just announce what your table covered.
Okay, Grant. At our table, we were discussing local tennis opportunities, but not just tennis to do with the proposed Activity Hub. And a lot of the discussion was the fact that it is not just tennis. Engaging with the Eagles Foundation, there's going to be a lot of access to other disabled sport provisions going on as part of the Activity Hub, netball, football, golf and so on and so on. There was a lot of things mentioned. And people also expressed that it was good to hear a bit more information about what's actually proposed and how it's going to work with cycling for all, because there is going to be quite a lot of crossover with their provision and other disability provision going on around the Activity Hub, which was good to hear. And plan is for it to be a good welcoming space that's not an indoor setting, it's not associated with a particular club or anything like that, so it'll be welcoming and have less barriers. And that was about it really. Have I missed anything? No, no.
Is that okay? That's great. So and I understand you've got the notes there, Henry, and you're going to send them on to my officer here.
My handwriting would make a Dr Cringe, so I'm going to type them up and send them to a deal.
Thank you very much. Okay. How about, would you like to go next then? Thank you, Catherine.
So we started off fairly negatively, I would say, but it did get better, so do hold on. We talked about some decline in a couple of sports in the city, predominantly badminton and table tennis. They've seen quite a decline, discussed reasons why that might be, some of it around trend, particularly lack of young people entering the sport, that might be a major issue. Lack of provision within education and at school, not really getting the chance to take part, but also increased costs in using indoor facility. Both sports have to be played indoor, the costs are getting higher and higher and that's a real challenge. But on the flip side, we talked about some really good work that's taken place in hockey and there's been some junior programmes that have helped to increase the number of young people playing hockey, which has been brilliant. We briefly touched on the impacts of Covid and the cost of living on sport and physical activity and that both have had a negative impact, but we're hoping particularly in Covid's case that people are starting to come back out and take part in activities, albeit there is some fear still around as a result. And then lastly, we did eventually get to some really good things, that there is a feeling that Sheffield is an active city. There's lots of opportunities for challenging runs and cycles, I think, with all our hills. But actually, in some cases, people do see Sheffield as a really active place and that maybe we just need to kind of celebrate that more and encourage those that don't feel welcome to feel more welcome moving forward.
Thank you very much, that's wonderful. Yeah, noting actually that we were hoping to have tables on outdoor activity and also one on cycling, but that didn't come off unfortunately, people weren't able to attend and facilitate those. We would have had those, so I'm glad that has been absorbed into this table over here. So thank you very much for doing that. Third table, if you can announce the kind of what you covered and.
So we spoke quite a lot about how the football club and football clubs in general, including Sheffield United, are inclusive, particularly around women's sport, women's football, also accommodating disabilities. So we mentioned about the disability provisions and how we make that accessible and how potentially some providers of physical activity for children and adults with disabilities may be falling short in terms of really accommodating for their needs and how sport can be for everyone. So a bit of reflection on that really. We mentioned about some clubs that do have a sensory room for a match day and potentially how we can pitch the club to pitch in for a sensory room, which might be a separate conversation. But certainly the potential to make the facility and the game more inclusive. We spoke about some of the recent events that happened on a match day, racism that happened against Coventry and how that might be deterring people from attending Sheffield Wednesday, as well as generally footballing as a whole across the country, maybe the animosity and the violence that is happening on a match day and certain communities not accessing that. We also mentioned about our activities in special schools, Sheffield Wednesday in particular, and how we deliver some inclusive work there. And also how we can do more in making the community aware of what we're doing and some people may be feeling that they've not really understood what we do in the community and it's not got to them. So what are the other ways that we can advertise some of the work that we're doing? Not only just on social media on a match day, but also people that might not support Sheffield Wednesday. And then finally, I might have missed a few bits because it was a long conversation, but how we engage with Sheffield United. So obviously a big rivalry in the city, but the clubs often come together from a community perspective. We see the value in coming together, not just separating the divide north and south, but using both of our assets to widen the exposure of the work and to reach more people.
Thanks very much, Ben. It was, I mean, it was really eye-opening, honestly, you know, the presentation was great. On women's football, I actually go with, my daughter persuaded me to go along with her group of student friends and we went along, we absolutely loved it, it was great. This is over at Bramall Lane. And it was quite cheap as well. So if you want value for money, the women's football matches are absolutely amazing. Sorry, I brought it up. But thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you everyone for participating in that. It does go forward, I mean, you know, we genuinely do make sure that the committee, the correct committee gets this information and any stakeholders that are involved as well. So you'll get the feedback as well from this as well, Ben, and Sheffield Wednesday and others. So we're going to move on now to item, I think we're on item 10, which is public questions and petitions. So we've got, we had one question that was resolved within the table. There was a second one, which we are going to, because it's quite a specialist answer that's required, what we're going to do is pass that on to planning and highways committee. And that will be answered by the officers and they'll get back to the person who sent it in. But it was, and they've asked me to read it out. So the question was, there is a planning application for an oldie development opposite Sheffield Wednesday on Peniston Road. They don't want to accommodate the requirements of the Upperton Trail, which is the cycle trail, and the active travel that's part of that. So can the council move to force developers to meet these requirements along the whole route from the city centre to Stockbridge? So this is a question about access, isn't this? So we will make sure that you get a reply on this. So thank you. Yeah, do you want to make comments, Toby?
Yeah, just to update people. Thank you. Just to update people, you know, it is a contentious thing at the moment, this planning application, it is still open. If people want to make representations on it, I'm very strongly encouraged you to do so. And that is, that issue about the slip road, breaking in, or sort of cutting into the Upperton Trail or the cycle route down Peniston Road, is a major feature of the comments so far. Many people agree with you, including myself, yeah. Yeah, the three Hillsborough councillors have objected individually to it on those grounds, yeah.
And so do make your thoughts known to your local councillors. Okay. Okay. You will get a response back on that. I don't think we've got any more to cover. There's two things on my mind at the moment. One is that we don't have a date for the next meeting because it's after the local elections. That's right, isn't it, a deal? Yep, we don't have a date. It will be in June or early July. They are not fixed until after the local elections. I don't know why, but anyway, that's what happens. The second thing is we've got an event next week, which is sold out. But I'm going to tell you that in this building, we're going to have a breaking of the fast for Ramadan and it's called the Iftar. And let's blow our own trumpet, we've done really well, we've sold out. We've got around 120 people signed up to come along to it and a waiting list of 70.
250.
250, let's just say that, 250, a deal? Fantastic, right, it's twice as much as I thought. Yes, so we're actually going to, we're hiring the room downstairs, which is much bigger than this one. I've got a question from the floor on that. That's always, that's always a possibility, isn't it? Right, thank you very much. I think we've finished just a minute. Oh, we must approve the minutes so the coun, I think this is just the councillors, isn't it? So the councillors have to approve the minutes of the previous meeting, which I've looked at, I hope other people have basically scanned over them. Good. So are they approved, the minutes? Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I've seen nods around the room. You can note that, Jay, thank you very much. Okay, so I think we've finished. Are we going to wrap up at this point? We finished slightly early, 10 minutes early from what we normally do. So thank you very much, I hope you have a safe journey home.